I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, March 2, 2023, to order. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Francis, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Trustee Marshazga, here. Trustee Pollock?
Here.
Trustee Clarity?
Here.
Trustee Evans?
Here.
Trustee Hannan?
Here.
Trustee Gallegos?
Here.
President Sells? Or, sorry. Sorry. President Bellary?
Still here, thank you.
Thank you. Village Attorney Malina?
Here.
Also present Village Manager Francis.
Village Manager Scolera. Sorry. Under the President's report tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce Commissioner Frank Aguilar. Frank is our Cook County Commissioner and a very good friend of the Village of Riverside. The night we had the storm, June 13, at 11 o'clock at night, Frank was the first call we got. Called me on my cellphone, wanted to ask whatever he can do, and he made sure that Cook County was here helping our Public Works Department, and then he also helped facilitate a meeting with all the affected Presidents and Mayors. So, we really appreciate what Frank does.
Thank you very much, President Bellary, and distinguished trustees. Just a quick report, what I've done here for the District. Riverside received $1,164,090.27 from the Opera Funding. I brought over $1 million, over $100 million of Opera Funding in the District, and $10 million in back to business funding in the 16th District, in two community organizations, businesses and municipalities. I've also partnered up with the Sheriff's Office for safety training, carjacking prevention seminars, car safety, repairing headlights, and other issues, and information sessions with the Cook County Sheriff, and I also worked, and for a year, I've been working on getting a, and I sponsored a bill to get the Sheriff a helicopter for $11.4, 11 million point four, 400,000, and as for use of, you know, to carjackings, rescues, and also for other emergency services, and also to help municipalities, just in case you need assistance in emergency situations. Also partnered up with the Board of Review Assessors' Office to hold property taxes appeal seminars and get information to access residents and keep their taxes as low as possible. I brought over $3 million to the 16th District for gun prevention reduction. That's becoming a big issue, and hopefully we can end it soon. Brought over, I brought some funding to, for returning citizens, for rental assistance and reentering services, hopefully they could get a new, a brand-new start in life. Bought climate plan funding to form grants in the 16th District municipalities to improve climate residency, including addressing flooding. Flooding's a big issue, and I promise you, I've been talking to federal, state officials, and that's one of my main priorities, is flooding in the District, and working on getting, you know, funds on this. I'm not going to rest until we get something done and get some funds to, to, to help flooding in our villages. Obtained some votes to bring transportation and infrastructure funds to the 16th District and improve streets, traffic, and again flooding. I've been working with federal, state, and local municipality offices to provide healthcare options and information, rental assistance for tenants, and landlord assistance in businesses, and help the unemployed. These past two years, I set up multiple COVID-19 testing and vaccine facilities and distributed, you know, thousands of PPE districts, and I had the highest testing facilities and vaccinations in the District, and the highest, over 72% of my District was vaccinated. So, I really put emphasis on that during the last two years with COVID. Assisted residents and Cook County Emergency Rental Assistance, I host monthly town hall meetings, Facebook Live, and talk about issues on the residents, and I published a, every, every year I published a, a report about, about the District. Some upcoming events, initiatives coming up. My goal is to reach over 500 homeowners exemption, and I go for this, for this year, and if you want to call, you know, help me collaborate with your town and go door-to-door and help them with the, with the appealing on their tax, on their property taxes. If you have any events, I'd be loved to have. I know, I'll be coming to a breakfast this Saturday with the boys, because I want to thank President Bellary for inviting me, and I'll be here this Saturday. That's really about it, my, my report here, and I'm glad to be here, and I'm here, anything you need, give me a buzz, and again, I want to just thank President Bellary for having me here, or your, as a guest.
Thank you, Frank. Thanks for everything you've done for us and everything you plan on doing for us in the future.
Very good. I want to take a quick picture, because I got another meeting, so I can't take a quick picture, but I'll just.
Sure.
I used to be a Riverside DC back in the day, if I've ever told you this, back in the 80s. I used to run the haunted house here back in the 80s. That was kind of fun. Thank you.
I should have asked before Frank leaves, is there any questions that anyone has for Frank? Hearing none. Frank, take care. Next up is the manager's report, Ms. Francis.
I do not have a report this evening.
Thank you. We move on to the resident comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Hearing none. Move on to the consent agenda. Manager Francis.
Approved voucher list of bills, March 2, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, February 16, 2023. Historical Commission regular meeting minutes, January 17, 2023. Riverside TV Commission regular meeting minutes, January 9, 2023. Landscape Advisory Commission regular meeting minutes, January 10, 2023. Review and File Community Development, January report. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. A resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, authorizing Village Manager to issue a purchase order for the not-to-exceed amount of $20,925 to Patriot Equipment for the purchase of a tandem vibratory roller. A resolution authorizing the Village Manager to waive competitive bidding and issue a purchase order for the not-to-exceed amount of $41,431 to Midwest Paving Equipment, Inc., for the purchase of a hotbox trailer.
Thank you. Does any trustees or visitor wish to have anything removed? Okay. Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion in a second, please.
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marshazga. Manager Francis?
Trustee Marshazga?
Aye.
Trustee Pollock?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Hannan?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to department, board, and commission reports. Are there any reports this evening from any of the trustees? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our pending business. Like to introduce the people from the Army Corps of Engineers that will give us our Groveland flood wall update. Manager Francis?
Thank you. So, since Army Corps of Engineers was last at a village board meeting, it was in December of 2020. Since that time, and unfortunately, the project hasn't had significant movement because the, because of COVID, and then additionally different staffing shortages that were experienced, but now they have started. They are at the 50% point, which, when we initially entered into this agreement, Army Corps promised that they would come back to the board and provide a status update, and that's what they're here to do this evening. So, we have several individuals from Army Corps of Engineers. We have, just so that the board is aware, Jeff Zucker is no longer the project lead, however, he's here this evening to assist the new team in this transition. We have Felicia Cummings, who I believe is now the project lead. We have Jeremiah Haley, and we have Yuki Galiciano. In addition, Andrew Lynn is also assigned to the project, but he was unable to attend this evening, so I will turn it over to the team to provide the board with an overview and answer any questions that the board may have.
Orion, would you mind coming up and sitting with us? We have a space for you. Orion's our engineer, so I know some questions may, that's why he's here tonight, so if there's some questions, this way he has a microphone so he can answer. Thank you for being here, Orion. Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Hello, my name is Felicia Cummings, the new project manager for the Groveland Levy Project, and as Jessica mentioned, my team members are Jeremiah, Yuki, and Jeff is still here to help through this transition. So, we put together a PowerPoint presentation just to give you guys an overall background for those that aren't familiar with the project, and just a recap of those that are. So, today's agenda, I'll cover the background, the alignment proposal, project costs, our funding update, and the proposed schedule, and then at the end, we'll open it up for questions.
Can I ask you to speak up? This, this, this room is voluminous and needs.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the background, if you, for those that don't know, the Upper Plains River and the tributaries in Illinois and Wisconsin study, back in March of 2014, the Division Commander approved the study to be enhanced, and in 2015, we received 50K provided to negotiate the PPA, which is an agreement, and then negotiations, negotiations were continued along with refined modeling, and since then, we have been going through our plans and specs in our design phase to put together a plan to implement the prevention of flooding going forward. So, this is a picture of the flood that happened back in 2013 and the residents that it affected. The next slide here is our direct comparison, which shows, once the alignment and the flood walls are in place, what houses will no longer receive the flooding. The flooding and the flood walls will prevent flooding in the neighborhoods, but it also does not increase the river levels upstream or downstream, and it also does not meet the FEMA requirements at this time, but we are working with them going forward. This is an example of what the flood walls will look like, so guys, so everybody can have a general idea of what a flood wall is and what will be in the backyard of their houses. Oh, Yuki, you want to speak?
Hi, I'm Yuki Galisano. I'm the geotechnical engineer on the team, and I'm also transitioning the tech lead duties over to Jeremiah, but this kind of gives you an idea of the structures that are going to be going into the alignment. So, we'll be driving sheet pile down to a certain depth, and then over that, it will be capped with reinforced concrete, and along certain portions, there will also be sheet pile driven all the way up to the height that we'll be designing for, and then it'll just be encased in concrete. So, the next slide shows the proposed alignment for the project, and it kind of gives you an idea of the extents of the project. So, if you start on the south end, right now, it's oriented 90 degrees, but to the left is the south side, and you'd probably recognize it. But over by the train tracks, we'll be tying into high ground, and we'd like to avoid impacting the railroad, so we'll be putting in a tieback and then coming, pretty much following along the riverbank with a flood wall, and the heights will range from about one foot along the tieback to about three feet over at the south end, and then up to six to seven feet, all the way up to Forest Avenue. And then at Forest Avenue, we'll be proposing to install a post and panel closure. And north of that, we'll be installing the sheet pile with the concrete encased on either side, through the existing embankment along Groveland Avenue, and then we'll be curving that along Park until it ends over by Woodside, which will then require about a one-foot sandbag closure to be installed across the end. And we did want to put in two different pump stations. One will address the interior drainage along the north end, north of Forest Avenue, and then there'll be another one that we're calling the south pump station, and that'll address interior drainage issues south of Forest Avenue as well.
So, for our overall cost, the project was $4.6 million for construction, for relocation was 1.2 million, 1 million. Our engineering and design phase was 625,000, and our construction management was 299,000. The total project cost came to 7.16 million. Federal cost, 4 million, and the non-federal cost was 2 million. Right now, as it stands, as far as the remaining funds on the federal side, we are 50% with our design, and we have $32,000 left. For the non-fed, there is $214,000 remaining, total 247,000, and about right now, to complete the design phase, it'll take about $320,000. But from the Fed, we have requested additional Fed funds to be implemented, and we're waiting for that approval. As far as the proposed schedule, we are finalizing the alignment this spring 2023. The final engineering and design should be complete fall 2023 into spring 2024. As far as our real estate acquisition, we have started on that plan, which will take about 18 to 24 months. The award for the contract should be around fall of 2025, and construction should begin later 2025, early spring 2026, ending in the summer of 2028. We do have a surveyor scheduled to come out to survey the properties in April, on April 4, 2023, weather permitting. Any questions at this time?
Thank you. Trustees, any questions for, please?
It's my understanding that a Section 106 process that involves all potential interested parties needs to be initiated with respect to this. I'm just trying to understand where that fits in with this timeline.
So, regarding SHPO and the 106, it is going to be submitted, and my planner with SHPO would like to meet with the Preservation Committee and bring them in as a consultant party, if they're interested, and she would also like to know what your concerns are, if you have any, and are there any other parties that you would like to be a part of the Consulting Committee?
Yes, I think the National Parks Service needs to be involved. I think the Cook County Forest Preserve District should be alerted. You know, I mean, there is a full list of parties that needs to be contacted, and I think you, you know, need to do the due diligence and just notify all of them. I'm sure we have some local groups here, too, the Frederick Law Olmsted Society in particular, because of the national landmark status, that would be interested parties.
Okay, and we are planning to meet with SHPO and the Historic Committee soon here in Riverside, so there will be another meeting to discuss the 106.
Okay, and then the process will be initiated, you know, prior to when? I'm sorry. I don't want to put any words.
Right, right, right. I'll get back to you on that one.
Megan?
We're aware that the proposed plans don't meet the current FEMA standard, but you mentioned working with FEMA on that. Can you expand on that? Is there some context to whether they, it might meet, the standard may change?
So, yes. FEMA just updated their flood map, and right now, they did a remapping back in 2020, 2008, 2009, where they republished the flood map. Right now, we need to do some runs of risk with them to determine what the case will be, what, what will happen in that case. So, there's not really a timeframe on that, but we are going to be in communications with them as far as some of the runs of the risk.
When's the last time that the flood map planning was done? Was done in 2020?
I believe Army Corps had mentioned that it was either, they believe that they started in 2008, and that it was between 2008 and 2010.
So, we're working off of 10-year-old data?
Essentially, yes.
And will we have more updated data before we build a wall that may be too small or too tall?
That is a great question.
Sorry, Ed.
So, the FEMA flood maps were 2010. The data that we used to do the modeling that she was referencing in her presentation has the newest, latest, and greatest that we got from Riverside on the LiDAR that they had flown with Cook County. So, we used the latest and greatest topographic data along with the latest modeling to be able to determine what the flood levels are in this area based on that model that she showed the end result picture of.
And I believe it was also utilizing the new precipitation, the, based on the report that was released in March of 2022.
Correct. We have updated the precipitation values on that as well, so we have those results, and those are incorporated into this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any questions on that side? Mr. Hannan?
Could we go back to sort of the, looks like a map that shows the design of the wall with the floodgate? I just want to get a sense of
This one?
What it represents and what it doesn't represent. Could, I mean, there's no sense of scale, and, and I'm assuming that this is just a rough design. Is that correct?
I'll take you.
You know, I don't, I don't know how to use the computer. How do you?
This is ordering back.
Oh, okay, for the background slide?
You want the background slide?
Maybe.
Do you have the other PowerPoint?
Yes, it's loaded.
Oh, there you go. We got it. Thank you.
Okay. So, I think if you wanted to get a closer look at the alignment, this will kind of show you a closer view of what we're thinking of. The wall itself, this is a typical of what it's going to be looking like, and this is just an example of the profile. So, I kind of mentioned before, for the design, you have a sheet pile driven to a certain depth, and then on top, there'll be a concrete with reinforcement on top, and this will be about two feet wide. And then, we do have a little bit more detail about the pump stations. We have the one located on the north side of Forest Avenue, and then also on the south side, which is right, I think to the west of West Avenue as well. So, you were asking about the alignment, or did you mention?
I guess my question is, I'm looking at this map, and I have no idea what it's showing me. I don't have a sense of how far from the riverbank into the property it's going. I have no idea, you've blurred the houses. I have no idea how close it's intending to be to the house. I have no sense of the pump stations, where, you know, how they're going to look, where they're going to be specifically on the property. You know, where the pump station is, there's a box, there's a rectangle, there's a bunch of lines without any description. So, I'm wildly confused what I'm supposed to take away from this.
Oh, okay. So, that was just the general alignment that we just took from one of our drawings that kind of showed an overview of pretty much just the general area. If you're interested in more detail, we do have that information available in some of the background slides that we have. You could kind of see here that we do have some topographic lines, property boundaries, the stationing, and pretty much, right now, you know, this is along Park Avenue, you can kind of see where things are kind of going.
I think the question he's asking will be, correct me if I'm wrong, won't these, won't these be answered when the surveyor comes out? We will know exactly where the, where the wall is, is positioned in people's yards, along with the, that will also give us where it's at five feet height, where it's at four feet, where it's at two feet.
Oh.
So, all those questions will be answered once the surveyor's out.
I see. Is that your question where?
I guess the question is, what's, what's the plan? Where's the, I mean, I'm assuming the surveyor is going to go along a test line that they've already identified, and I can't, I mean, that map is much more detailed than what we have in our materials, and I don't believe we were supplied with any of the background slides before this meeting, so I have no way to prepare and ask an intelligent question about what I'm looking at.
Yes, I'm sorry. We just provided a general overview of the alignment.
But the surveyor will be able to answer those questions when they come out to do the survey.
And we can pull the, that additional data and work with Army Corps to provide it for the board at a subsequent meeting. So, if there's any other
They have provided a lot of that information, which is what I gleaned from the review letter that I sent you before, so I'm happy to sit down with you guys soon.
When's the next time we're going to have a presentation?
With Army Corps? That's dependent on the board. We wanted to make sure that, obviously, there was the promise to bring them back at the 50% point, and so it's dependent upon the board and the feedback and the additional dialogue that, that the board wants to have with Army Corps.
In your timeline, you referenced property acquisition takes 18 to 24 months, but mentioned that's underway. Can you clarify exactly what's, what is underway?
So, we've started initial coordination, so with the alignment that we have already proposed, we've already outlined the extents of easements that we would need. So, we've already had a couple initial coordination meetings with real estate, and they're going to start their actions on their end.
So, you haven't actually talked to client, residents yet?
This is just initial coordination. They needed a map just to kind of see what areas they would need to be looking at, what homes are impacted. So, just the general, basic stuff.
So, I think the answer to your question is none.
None. And what I'm getting at here, and I'll echo to some degree trustee Hannan's comments, is I would like more information on the process. Our residents are looking for more information on the process. We appreciate that you've come here tonight. I think if you're asking what we want at this board, from my, from my voice, I think we want more information. From our view, you know, we sit in a posture where this hasn't been fully approved by our board, and I don't feel personally as if I have nearly enough information on the details. So, you know, I understand your process, and it is a massive project. You can see that by the funding required, but as that information becomes available, this is a detail-oriented village. We're going to want to know where those pump stations are and what they're going to look like, and what these maps look like relative to our residents before things like property acquisition starts taking place. And we're, I think we also have an obligation to our residents to really understand the timeline. Our residents have been clear, the affected residents have been clear that this is a priority to them, and so we're trying to balance. We want more information from you to the extent you can provide it, but we're also really keen to make progress one way or the other to be responsive to our residents.
And a lot of that would be, is going to be answered once the survey is done, but just to reiterate the conversation we had about an hour ago, even though when the survey's done, doesn't mean that that line is set in stone. Pardon the pun. Pardon the pun. But it can, it can fluctuate and, and either move with larger acquisitions or move closer to the, closer to the river. Correct?
So yes, the alignment can change and then we would just have to make sure that we design for that.
Ms. Evans?
Could you maybe go over what the design process will be once you're at that stage? You did show some pictures of what the wall would look like. What does the design process call for? And how much will you engage the board and the community on that?
For the design of the wall or the pump stations? So we have the basic, you know, area. We've already done some subsurface investigations. So we understand what depth of the wall is needed. With that, we've already run some stability analyses, seepage analyses, some basic stuff for the walls. Our team is also designing the pump stations using some of the programs they have available. I think we're also working on doing or looking at potential utility relocations if they were needed.
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have been clearer. I was talking about the aesthetic, what the wall is going to look like.
Oh, okay. Oh, sure.
You know, several years ago, Orion, you guys, you all did a mock-up of what this wall would be and we sent it down to our preservation. They had a look at it. Is, do you, do you have a picture, do you have that paperwork?
So we, we did send that along to Army Corps and the feedback that we've gotten thus far is they have to, and so Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong. They have to submit the least costly option at this point to, within reason, to ship O4 review and then they'll review it along with our preservation commission and give feedback. So they have it, but they have to follow their different standards at the federal level to which is required and then get that feedback. And I'm assuming then get additional appropriation to build whatever the final outcome is.
One of the commitments that I have made to the board previously was that we can do things like when you look at the pictures of this wall that looks kind of more like a stone wall, not just a blank concrete rough surface like you would see on a sidewalk. We can do, they're called form liners. We put them in when we pour the concrete and they make the concrete look like something that's not concrete. Those kinds of costs are not super expensive. It's something that we can justify. So something that doesn't look exactly like a concrete sidewalk vertical is what you're going to get. You know, it kind of looks like the pictures that we had shown earlier with a couple of examples of the flood walls where it looks kind of more like a stone stacked wall. And we can do some things like decorative pillars. I think that was one of the things that Orion had sent our way, that there's like a pillar every so many feet. Those kinds of things that we have said that we would, we would do that as a way to make it look more, I don't know what you, what the term is, but look more like it would blend in with the community as much as possible.
There was also a discussion of riprock on the Riverside?
Yeah, so we would, that's one of the things that our hydraulic analysis will have to look at, what kind of stability we would need. And we've also talked about native plantings, using that in various areas to try and enhance the view of the wall as well. So those types of costs are within what we talked about. There are a few options that Orion's firm looked at that were much more enhanced and much more expensive, that that would not be within the least cost proposal that we would have for you at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Orion, do you have any?
No, I don't have any. Okay.
Mr. Pollak?
The issue of property acquisition was brought up and I think, I'm guessing they're using that term in the sense of acquiring easements.
Easements or properties.
Right. So that's my question is, is we had said that we wanted to at least have the opportunity to consider offering a total buyout to individual property owners.
Correct.
And so that's still on the table?
Still on the table. That's one of the reasons why we talked about the, the, the line that's being done has funging abilities to move up, if it was to move up towards the street.
I wouldn't expect to have an answer to that yet, but I just want to make sure that's still-
Still on the table.
Thank you.
So if, if I may, just so that I can make sure, we clearly understand what the board wants us to bring at an upcoming meeting. So we'll, we'll get out to the board additional data related to the lift station. I know that that's still in the design process, but we can certainly provide, because staff's still providing feedback as it relates to the design of, of the lift station. And then you had talked about more detail in the alignment, which we can get that out to the board. And so is there anything else that the, the board would?
Yeah, it just, it looked like they had a map with more detail and more scaling. I'd like to get access to that, just so I can understand, you know, what, what's, even in the design stage, what's contemplated.
And the other, the other thing is, piggybacking on Trustee Pollak's, everything has gone up since this, this project started, as well as the value of homes. So I would assume that along with construction costs, there's going to be acquisition costs that's going to be a more reasonable amount to today's dollars than they were in 2020 or 2019 or 2018. So I'm assuming you're going to come back with all of that, too.
So, and just to note, so if Army Corps or the federal government approve and appropriate for that, they're 80%. And so we're, we're the remaining 20% and MWRD has only approved up to us based on the old budget. And so that's just an item for consideration for the Village Board as well. So if there is a differential, that's something that will need to be reviewed and contemplated.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to summarize then and make sure I understand, my understanding is correct. Sometime later this spring, it sounds like, no promises, they'll be meeting, they'll start that historic preservation part of the review and they'll meet with our commission and other interested parties. And then at that time, that's when we start looking at the aesthetics of it.
When Chipotle takes a look at it.
And while that's going on, we'll be, they'll be developing the property acquisition data that we need.
And new numbers, correct.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
This is more of a welcome to Riverside meeting that brought in the new, the new crew to, to introduce them to you all, introduce them to the, to some of the residents and things like that. So we look forward to the surveyor coming out on the 4th and at least getting a start of what we're looking at. Because everything now is just, you know, it's blurry. So, thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from anybody in the audience? I don't know if any of you live over in that impacted area, if you do or don't. If you have any questions, now's, now's your time. Okay. Hearing none. Thank you all. Jeff, thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Orion, thank you for taking the time out to come tonight. Okay, we'll move on to a resolution opting into various nation, various nationwide settlement agreements relative to pending litigation against various opioid manufacturers, distributors, and related parties. Manager Francis?
If I may interrupt, President Ballerine, I need to abstain and recuse myself from this discussion. I was involved in a prior firm that is still paying me that was involved in this litigation, so I will have to not be involved.
Thank you. It's Francis.
Thank you. So in 2018, the Village Board retained the services of Edelson PC to represent the Village of Riverside in the class action lawsuit against opioid manufacturers. And also then the Village in, I'm sorry, in December 2021 approved, opting into the nationwide settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson slash Jansen and other distributors. And we've been notified by Edelson PC that we are eligible to opt into an additional settlement with defendants Teva, Allergan, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. And so we need board action to submit documentation to Edelson PC prior to April 18, 2023.
Are there any questions? I have one. We are, as you mentioned, we're in one settlement already. How is that?
Year, so year-to-date, we have received, or I'm sorry, since the settlement, we have received approximately $6,000. It is important to note that in our financials, we, we are segmenting those dollars because they can only be utilized for specific eligible related items at the, at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. If I can have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Pollak.
Second.
Second by Trustee Gallegos. Any further questions? Hearing none. Manager Francis, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Marchazga. Trustee Pollak.
Yes.
Trustee Clarity.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan abstained. Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to C and D and I'm going to take these out of order, if nobody, nobody minds. So the Building Department Inspection Overview. Knowing that Ashley is out tonight ill, I've asked just Manager Francis that she will take us through that. She may not have all the answers we need. So she will, if she doesn't have it, she will make sure she gets it to you properly. So, go ahead.
Yes. So the board had requested that staff provide an update on the Building Department inspections and overview. So to provide a really high level, last year we had hired TPI and they had an inspector in-house doing both inspectors and plan review on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so that was effective for maintaining costs, but then we would add on an additional day here or there during the peak season to add in inspections. But we know that the target for the board and the community is really to try to do next day inspections when possible. We consistently had our electrical inspector, who's been with the village for over 20 years, continuing to do his inspections on Tuesdays and Thursdays and then adding in inspections as needed or requested. Since then, also, we've been trying to recruit for a building inspector and building official. And unfortunately, the market has just been very challenging to find someone for that particular position. So early this year, we, we pivoted and in the next item before the board will be a purchase order and a contract with Lakeside Consulting, who the village has done work with previously. And so these kind of are intertwined, both the report and the contract. Lakeside will be able to provide inspections every day. They will additionally be able to provide some limited onsite staff for plan review. And so while the fees may be quite similar to what we were experiencing with TPI, the customer service and the turnaround of getting these inspections done, some of them may be able to be even done same day. Also, the new inspection services offers virtual. And while we were with them during 2020 and 2021, they were able to help when the swim club had to do certain inspections and they were kind of at a stopping point. They would do a virtual inspection to clear them to move on to the next step. So that can be very helpful for our residents and then also for contractors to make sure that their project continues to move along. Ashley put down the different inspections that were done throughout 2022 and outlined where, what they were primarily of. I can answer any questions that the board, I will try to answer any questions that the board may have relative to this. But really, the target is turning around inspections quickly, getting plan reviews done at a quicker pace and also providing that high level of customer service for residents and contractors.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll just make a comment to say, I'm pretty sure I was the one that had asked for some questions around turnaround times, which was in response to residents sharing feedback that it was difficult to get their projects through. So I appreciate, the materials are very comprehensive. It's clear how much work went into this. I have a greater understanding for how difficult it is to quantify turnaround time. So I just wanted to make clear that I appreciate the diligence paid here with respect to making sure that there's a positive experience for our residents, that there's a good professional turnaround time and to sympathize with the difficulty in staffing and emphasize that I, I do think having a full-time staffer is optimal. And so I encourage the village to continue with the proposed plan of looking for that going forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have one. The virtual inspections. What is, what is considered eligible for a virtual inspection? I assume not everything is.
Correct. So I'm, I'm not an inspector, so I really can't necessarily answer that question. You know, there, there were certain instances, so like, let's say someone had to fix something. So they did an inspection and something was incorrect and they said, okay, well, you need insulation here. The insulation you have is wrong. It needs to be updated. That would be something that would be qualifying, whether it's for a virtual or for something that could be submitted with recorded evidence, so pictures. So I think it really depends on the situation. We did do some virtual inspections during the peak of COVID as well. We would do FaceTime or Skype to, you know, see what the work was being done with the contractor. You know, it's not ideal. It's not perfect. And really, in most situations, we want the inspector there to, to be doing it. So I think it is just also kind of a stopgap, if absolutely necessary for them to progress to the next step. And the inspector is in agreement that it's appropriate.
I think there's a couple of things. I mean, we've, we've kind of talked about this or bantered about it to the board, like windows and doors, things like that can, it seems like they're ripe for virtual inspection. I mean, I don't know how, but I'm not an inspector either. But, Mr. Pollak?
I think I can give you a very good example, recent example of where a virtual inspection would have saved resident and the village time and effort. I had a bathroom remodel final.
You're the resident.
I'm the resident. And I failed, I should say, my contractor failed the final inspection because the window by the walk-in shower was supposed to be tempered glass. And so I had to replace that. And with a virtual inspection, I could have just taken a photograph of the seal on the window showing it was tempered glass and sent that in and the inspector wouldn't have had to come out. I wouldn't have had to worry about having someone at home. So I think that's probably an example of what a virtual inspection would be about.
And I would, hopefully that we can talk to Rick Dan Dan and Ashley and kind of get a list of some of these things. I remember one time they came to measure the holes in a guy's backyard when he was doing a fence. I'm like, what do you, why are you here? And he says, I'm here to make, make sure the hole's 36 inches deep. Well, it probably could have been done.
There are certain ones that you want to make sure that someone's onsite because if something's not being installed correctly, then, you know, that could have other implications.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on item D? Hearing none, we will move back up to item C. Do you have anything else you'd like to add to item C before I ask for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing nothing. Can I have a motion in a second to, for item C? Execute the purchase order to the new consultants, Lakeside Consultants.
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second. Second by Trustee Marchazga. Any further questions? Hearing none. Manager Francis, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Marchazga.
Yes.
Trustee Pollak.
Yes.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no new business tonight. We do have trustee reports and cross-climate collaborative C4. Trustee Marchazga?
All right. So I'm going to take off my mask very briefly for this. I am negative for COVID, by the way. I would just like to bring the board up to speed on everything we've been doing over the last month. Since the community engagement meeting that we had, the Road to 2050 in January, we did a companion survey for the community that sort of delved into the same topics, but with a more open-ended approach. We did not have, at that time, the same ability to share with the community what the C4 was all about and what the different priority areas were. But I have to thank Riverside TV and give them a big shout-out for working with the group to record some video introductions that are now posted on the C4 page of the village website. These short videos give an explanation of what this, you know, multi-community process involves and what it will look like here in Riverside. So it's very exciting. And in addition to that, we are, have included in your packet tonight a framework for the kind of decision-making that the C4 team will be undertaking with the community. Because in developing a climate action and resilience plan for Riverside, this is coming from the community. And we've, you know, we're listening, and we're engaging at different steps in the process to really form a plan of action that makes sense for us and our community. And people wanna know, and we want them to know, you know, how are you going to be making these decisions? So the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, as some of you have seen and received, this very complex manual that came with the program. And we tried, in your packet tonight, to provide a framework for decision that is, can also be used as a communication tool. So we're presenting it to you, the board, tonight for your thoughts and feedback. It's going to go to all of the different stakeholders, like the township and the schools, you know, for their thoughts and feedback. But it is preliminary, and it's, you know, it is just a little glimpse into what the process and the analysis is going to look like. So if anybody has any questions on this document and this proposal, please let me know. You definitely have time to still give feedback on it as the C4 team in Riverside meets on the last Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM. So there's plenty of time to give me your thoughts, and we can go from there.
And the video from Riverside TV is on our website under the C4?
Under the C4 page, yes.
It's also available on YouTube?
Yes.
Where else? Yeah, YouTube and the website. So there's plenty of opportunities to see it. So I encourage everyone to watch it. If they have questions, please get them over to Trustee Marchazga or Trustee Evans. Thank you. Thank you for your continued work on this. I appreciate it, both of you. Any other trustees have a report this evening? Yes, Trustee Gallegos?
Okay, so 2025 will mark the village's 150th. It's a Sasquatch Centennial. And I've asked President Ballerine if we could form a committee as to how our village should celebrate it. I did ask for a couple of volunteers, Aberdeen, because she doesn't have enough to do, and she's an overachiever. And Kathy Mullany has stuff for her. But anyone in the village, anyone of the residents who would like to come forward and volunteer your time and efforts on this, should contact me at my email address, agallegos@riverside-il.us. Speaking of volunteers, we are certainly a village that's rich in volunteerism. And since 1950, we have had Riverside's Person of the Year, which honors someone who has volunteered their time and efforts for the benefit of the community over a period of time. And anybody who wishes to nominate someone should send their nominations to the Lions Club and send it to the Riverside Township office. There's a lot of great things that are happening. So, you know, people who put their efforts in should certainly be recognized. You know, one of them that comes to mind is the Howzer Food Drive, which is happening right now until the end of April. They're collecting food. That's like 52 years long. Mr. B. started that years ago, and he was Person of the Year in 1996. So a lot of good things are happening. You should recognize that.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other reports? Hearing none. We do have the need for an executive session this evening to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purpose of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated, and to discuss the setting of price for the sale and lease of village property. The board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. So I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Pollak. Any further questions? Hearing none. Manager Francis?
Trustee Marchazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.